Welcome to City Council. Thank you all for coming. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We will do the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance. Pastor Ed Bruning from our Savior Lutheran Church will be doing the invocation, if he's available. I will say a few words then. Please rise. Again, thank you all for coming this evening. We are fortunate to live here in Boulder City. I think we all know that. We also know that the fact that Boulder City has been such a great community for so many years takes a lot of effort. And that's due to many of the women and men that are in this room today. I think we owe all of them debt of gratitude. And with that, we will proceed to the pledge. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any public announcements this evening? I know we've signed a couple of the fourth graders' agendas. Are there any other fourth graders that we have not yet signed their agendas? If we could have the two that are here this evening stand up, we'll recognize you for your efforts. Thank you for coming. All right, we will go ahead then and proceed to our first public comment period. The public comment period at the beginning of the meeting must be limited to matters that are listed on the agenda. The time will be five minutes for each speaker. As always, we ask you to be civil and concise. Is there anyone wishing to speak in public comment this evening?
My name is Glenn Fan. Good evening, Mayor, Council, city staff. I'm here to speak about item number eight, about the appeal for the gate. This issue was taken up by the Planning Commission. I was at that meeting. City staff presented their case for the city. I thought it was presented very well. And the Planning Commission then went on to have their conversation about the issue. I think they're very fair. They listened to all people concerned. They talked it over, what was good, what was bad, everything. The gate should not be there. It is against city code. There are no gated communities in Boulder City. I think we need to keep that. If you override the Planning Commission, why have a Planning Commission? If we override that and have a gated community, you open the gates to more gated communities. If you allow one, you're not going to be able to deny another. This particular gate and stuff like that, you put it up without permits. He was told not to. He went ahead and did it. He was told to keep the gates open. He kept them closed. He just thumbed his nose at the whole city and everybody in it. I think you need to uphold the Planning Commission's decision to deny this gate. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Please state your name. Yes, I am Judy Hoskins, Boulder City. Thank you all for allowing me to speak on item eight. This issue boils down to the following questions. Is this a violation of city code? Was a permit applied for prior to the installation? Did the city advise the individual of a possible violation in a timely manner? Did the individual proceed after they were advised of a possible violation? Was the individual advised of a hearing in a timely manner? If the answer to all of the above questions is yes, except for maybe question two, then the city should demand the removal of the gate and a fine should be imposed if this is the proper course of action. The city has rules and regulations. Anyone who knowingly violates such needs to be taken to task. I have personally dealt with the city code enforcement office. I found the employees to be very professional, knowledgeable, and eager to help. And I can't imagine that they did not try to resolve this prior to it becoming a larger issue. Thank you very much, and I thank the code enforcement people for their help.
Anyone else wishing to speak this evening?
How are you doing? My name is Steve Safer. So I've driven by the property several times, know the property. And I think what some of the people have said is great if you're not evolving as a community. If you look at Las Vegas, there's everything, there was codes, there was people building. Things change. I think this community has changed. You're putting up millions of dollars for the palm trees now. You're beautifying the community. And I also think you have to also ask yourself, is it helping the community? Is it building value? And is the homeowner doing the right thing in beautifying the community? As I drove by it, I say yes. Also for safety as well. It's a fantastic-looking gate, in my opinion. I understand everybody's got on your codes and what you have to do civilly. But as the city evolves and makes changes, those changes have to be met with the people moving in. So if you're trying to attract more communities and more upscale communities to come in, I think you have to look at that in a much deeper, more broader scope, not so narrow. Everybody, I think, is looking at this very narrow, not looking at it broad. When I build a house here, I'd love to have gates. Keeps people out, keeps good people in. Everything has changed in the last 20 years. Communities has changed. Population has gone from 250 million to 360 million. So things just can't just stay the same, or you just don't evolve as a community. So in my opinion, I think it beautifies it. I think if more people do it, it'll raise and increase the values of people's homes. I think it protects people. You always have people coming in, transients, so on and so forth. We live in a crazy world today. So I'm all for the gates. I like to build gates around my home and my place and my compound as well. And I hope the city council will consider that as evolving as a community and not staying back as a community. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak this evening? All right, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the regular agenda. Any changes, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, staff is requesting to remove item number seven, please.
Mr. City Manager?
No additional changes.
Mr. City Attorney?
No further changes.
Thank you. You have a motion then to approve with changes?
I'll make a motion to approve with changes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And I did forget to mention, we do have Councilman Harhay on the phone this evening as well. Approval of the consent agenda, Madam City Clerk? Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
Mr. City Clerk?
City Attorney, no changes? That's all right.
My apologies. I should have known that.
Well, at least he's not asleep.
All right, motion for approval then?
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. All right, we'll move on to item number four is a bill introduction. Anyone wishing to introduce bill number 1860?
I'm able to introduce bill number 1860. Read the title, waive the reading.
Bill number 1860, an ordinance of the city of Boulder City amending Title I, Chapter Nine, Financial Administration by amending Section 194 to create additional required city funds account types, Section 196 to create a revenue stabilization and natural disaster mitigation fund, and to delete Section 197, RDA Utility Project Reserve Account. Bill number 1860 will be considered at the September 24th regular city council meeting.
Thank you. We'll move to item number five then, a presentation and update of the status of the Boulder City Strategic Plan.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, residents of Boulder City. I'm excited to bring to you tonight an update on the strategic plan implementation plan. As you know, we adopted the strategic plan in December, and we adopted an implementation plan in February of this year. Moving forward, we're going to be taking a look at how we are doing every quarter so that we can keep everybody updated on our progress as a city. So, once again, the goals. You can see there are five goals. We have the numerous strategies. Some of them are being met slowly. Because we did make this a five-year plan, we don't anticipate everything being done right away. But we are pretty, I'd say, pretty well ahead of what I anticipated at the beginning of all of this. We are doing an update on this on our website as well. So if there's anybody who has any questions on these, I'm just going to give a quick overview of some of the things that I thought were pretty cool that are going on. With strategy one, we are in the process of renewing the Munis Financial Management software. And the new contract, we just approved the addition of the transparency software, which will allow folks to see what we're spending money on. We all got a quick look at that. Diane Pelletier showed us a look at that last meeting. And so we've gotten a chance to take a peek at what that could look like for us. Strategies three and four, all reserves are funded. And strategies five through 10 are ongoing. For invest in infrastructure, our Public Works Department did secure funding from RTC to conduct pavement evaluation program and the 2020 intersection improvements. And they are currently working on a facilities master plan. Strategy one also includes the utilities reviewing, RFPs for utility rate study. I believe a suggestion on that is soon to come. And finance, public works, and utilities are currently reviewing the CIP. Of course, tomorrow we will have a workshop on the CIP here in city council chambers at 3:00. There will also be a public presentation. We're giving the public a second opportunity to ask questions. That will be on September 25th at 3:00. Manage growth and development. Strategy two, you might recall in July, students from UNLV presented their update to council. Strategy three, community development provided a report including compliance of the Controlled Growth Ordinance on August 13th. And on strategy seven, Public Works added bike lanes to several streets on the Slurry Seal Program, say that three times real fast, last fiscal year. Onto the next goal, promote historic preservation. Strategy three, city council voted on July 9th to approve an agreement between the city and SHPO for CLG designation. The application was accepted August 19th from the National Park Service. So way to go on that. And then strategy five, city council approved with the fiscal year 20 budget, $100,000 to support a new RDA grant to promote historic preservation. Finally, the last goal, sustain a high level of public safety services. This is a huge one because it includes so many different departments. It includes fire, police, courts, and city attorney's office. So there were quite a number of updates on this. The ones that I thought looked most interesting, BCPD staffing plan was updated for fiscal year 2020. It corrected personnel issues as required under state law. Strategy three, the fire department review is underway of the emergency management plan. Trainings are being held this fall. We're going to be doing two incident command structure classes here at City Hall for staff. I myself have taken six classes in the last two months. This is a really important item because it really does put us in a situation where if ever there is any need for a public incident command structure to take place, we're ready for it. And so one of the most critical components, in my opinion, of course, is communications. And so being ready for whatever happens is important, both for social media, traditional media, and for our website. So I've actually, if you guys ever want to pick my brain about it, I've learned quite a bit in the last few months about making sure we're ready if there is ever an emergency. Strategy five, fire department identifying technology shortfalls, and BCPD reviewing communication software. And they're looking to update and integrate vehicle cameras to body cameras. So those are just some of the items that have been updated so far. Once again, I, once I do collect all this information from all of the department directors, we put it together in a report. That report is available at bcnv.org/strapplan. It's that top line there, bcnv.org/strapplan. I have posted it there, so if anybody has any questions or wants to take a look at it, see where we're coming along. It's color-coded, so that makes it a little easier to follow along as well. Do you have any questions for me?
Council, any questions? Councilman Harhay, hold on just a moment. We need to get a little more volume there for you.
Are you there? Yes, I'm there. What was your comment?
We just need to get your mic turned in the right direction there. Please go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
We do.
Okay, well, my question is, what would the retirement of Chief Nicholson, how would that implement the schedule for implementation for those areas that he's responsible for?
Well, because it is a five-year plan, I don't anticipate it'll push us back too far, especially since we do have an interim fire chief named, and he's actually hit the ground running. So I don't see any issues with where the fire department stands in their implementation plan at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I have a few questions, and I know you may not be able to answer all of these directly. Over the past two years, there were a number of new positions that were approved. Have all of those positions now been filled? Do we have all the employees in place that have been approved?
We do. Except... Two? Two or three. So we're close.
Okay, thank you. You mentioned the street pavement evaluation project. Do we have a target date when that might be available?
Keegan Luchel?
Mayor, we actually just had a meeting with our consultant two weeks ago, and they were showing us the final draft of their report. I anticipate to get that in the next couple of weeks. They were just going to make some minor tweaks on it and finish their executive summary. They didn't want to do the executive summary until they got our comments on it, so, real soon.
All right, thank you. And a target date for the facilities assessment completion?
Me again. We had our last workshop a couple of weeks ago with the consultant on that. We gave them some recommendations, and they're putting the finishing touches on that, and we want to bring it. Once we have a chance to review the finishing touches, we'll bring it to you guys for a workshop or a chance to take a look at it before it's officially final. I don't know if they gave us a deadline for that. I think it was about a month, because they were still putting numbers to some of their assessments on the buildings, because they're analyzing the cost of repairs, upkeep, and all that.
All right, thank you. And the study or review that the UNLV students did, my understanding was when they made that presentation, they still had a little work left to do before they finalized it? Did they take the summer off, or... Just kidding.
No, Mayor. They have been working very hard with Rafi Fasikin, our economic development coordinator. And they will be back before the council on September 24th with the draft plan for the council consideration.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mays, you had mentioned, I believe at the last council meeting, that our commercial occupancy rate, the rate of vacancy is less than what it is in the valley?
Correct.
Okay. Do we, part of the strategic plan was monitoring the number of small businesses. I know that Rafi has been doing business retention meetings. What's your perception? How are we doing on the small businesses? Are they leaving, coming, staying?
Well, I think part of what we have seen, obviously some businesses closed right after the opening of I-11. However, considering the interest in investment that has occurred within our community within the last year, the opening of several businesses, as well as the reduction in the vacancy rate, those are all positive signs. How we will continue to monitor that moving forward will be to continue to look at the Visa View data, to continue to track vacancy rates, and to continue to engage with the business community to find out how they're doing and how the city can be supportive of their efforts.
All right. I'm just, you know, it seems that we have a relatively positive outlook in spite of, as you mentioned, some initial closings after I-11 opened. We seem to have found some stability in the community. That's the appearance, anyway.
Well, and certainly when the UNLV students present the economic development plan to the council on the 24th, it will include strategies of how we can continue to support local business efforts.
All right, thank you. I believe at the last Historic Preservation Committee meeting that they had agreed upon recommendations. Is that, do we know when that, those recommendations will come to council?
That will also be on the 24th.
Thank you. Another item under the public safety is communicating, celebrating, I believe is the word that's used, the low crime rate that we have here in Boulder City. Clearly, that's due to the efforts of both our police and fire. Something that I had talked about before is to get that information out to the community where crime may be occurring in the community. There are programs available, I know we've talked about this before, if that can be done. And I know that it's been said there's a great deal of expense involved, but, you know, maybe there are some companies that are looking for advertising versus revenue from the community itself. So I think that's something that would help us communicate to the community about it.
Well, a couple of things that are going on. One is, we are posting all of the neighborhood watch reports on our website, bcnv.org, so residents can see what calls did come into dispatch for police assistance. In addition, Ruby Perkins is assisting in looking at different programs so that we can do quote-unquote crime mapping, perhaps, so that residents can see what incidents have taken place in their particular neighborhood at a given time. There are a couple of options that they've taken a look at. I'm not sure where that stands right now. I think it's still in the investigative phase, but it is something that is being looked into for hopefully 2020, 2021.
All right, thank you.
Oh, and while we're communicating good things that happen with public safety, this morning, Bill Avery, a civilian who works for BCPD, was awarded an Offender Watch Award of Excellence. He received the award for his work on our sex offender registry. We did issue a news release and got his picture posted on our website and on Facebook, Instagram, Twitter. Really good news for our police department. It's, they recognized five...
Fifteen.
Fifteen, fifteen out of fif- sorry, 50 out of 50,000, 15,000 employees in law enforcement. So to be recognized in such a big audience is great news for our community.
Well, congratulations to Mr. Avery. Sounds like he did a good job on that.
He did, he did.
And the last item I had, you know, this strategic plan was put together some time ago. It's been in place for some time. I agree that the progress looks good on it. But I would just suggest to the other council members, since they didn't have input on establishing these goals and strategies, if there are things that are in there that they feel need to be looked at again, it's probably better to do that early in the plan than getting too far down the road. So I would just encourage the other members of council, if there are things in there that you think need to be updated or changed, you know, I wouldn't want to have to go back out and do the whole thing over again. But if we needed a workshop or something like that to discuss any of the issues, that might be worthwhile while we're still early in the plan.
And like I had mentioned earlier, the plan is listed on our website as well as the implementation action plan. So that makes it pretty easy for anyone who does want to take a look at it, including residents, in case residents wanted to provide some input as well. But yeah, I absolutely think that it's something that can be looked at, and if there are, I don't believe in a, and I believe that things are a living, breathing document. And so if there is something that we could tweak that you think could be better, let's have that discussion sooner rather than later.
All right. Any other questions? Councilman Adams?
I guess mine's just a little bit more general here, because you've, you've got a lot of good ones in there. I guess for city manager, any of the other department heads, is there any, has there been any bumps or roadblocks or any challenges that you didn't foresee happening that, with some of these strategies? Or is everything going pretty smooth sailing right now, would you say?
Currently, right now, we're just getting started, if you will. And so we're starting to put a lot of the basics in place in order to start, you know, reaping what we sow, so to speak. A lot of the plans, a lot of the studies that are going on. You know, you see a lot of staffing that's coming on board, that because of that staffing, some of the skill sets that we brought in-house, we should start seeing some efficiencies that will come out at the other end. And so those are the kinds of things that, it is a five-year plan, and we're starting now, but, you know, we will see progress as we go forward. So, you know, if there are issues, concerns along the way, you know, we have those discussions. And if it doesn't make sense to continue working on a particular priority for whatever the reasons are, at that point, you know, the council certainly can decide, you know, maybe we need to go in a different direction, maybe we need to add more resources, maybe, you know, whatever that discussion ends up recommending, we can make those changes at that time. So, again, this is the council's strategic plan, and, you know, it is, you know, upon you to decide if the course is right. If we need a slight change, we can certainly do that as well. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to item six now, Resolution 6984 for creation of ad hoc committee for the municipal pool. Did we have... Go ahead.
Did you want a brief report, or did you want to go into...
No, please, go ahead.
At the regular meeting on August 13th, the council directed staff to bring forth a resolution for the creation of an ad hoc committee for the municipal pool. The stated purpose was to evaluate the current pool and consider rehab, remodel, or completely build a new pool and some alternatives to do so, so that the community will feel confident moving forward in getting a pool. At the time, it was directed to staff to make the resolution flexible, appoint up to a seven-member group with two ex-officio members of council. And of course, this group, because it's created by council, would be bound by the open meeting law requirements. And the meetings will occur monthly. As an ad hoc, it serves a specific purpose, and so once that purpose is achieved, then the committee would be dissolved. So I think, from my understanding of the council's direction, that the council was hoping to get some recommendations back from this committee by the November 2020 election. So...
So this could go forward on the next ballot. Yesterday, the mayor had proposed some changes and those were forwarded to you, once I've received them, for your consideration as well. And we also have copies for any members of the audience if they would like to see those changes proposed. That's it.
Thank you. Again, I do appreciate the work that city clerk, city attorney did on getting that information together and the resolution language together. There were, as Madam City Clerk just mentioned, there were some changes that I had proposed to this. You know, one of the changes is to increase the number of people from seven to nine. I did hear from folks over the past week that they felt there should be some other types of contributions on the committee. So that's, I believe, one way that that could be achieved is to increase that number by a couple. I also think it's important that we realize the amount of work that's already gone into this effort. I think that, you know, the work that was done by the Parks and Rec Director, Mr. Hall, we had hired a architecture firm, we had hired a consultant. They came into the community, they held meetings. We've already received a tremendous amount of input on what the community would like to see as far as a pool goes. There was also a survey done, and that survey did indicate that, you know, the community would love a new pool. They would like it publicly funded, but they didn't want to pay for it themselves. And when it went to the ballot in June, that's clearly what they said. The question was defeated by 72%. So my reason for suggesting this committee is that I feel it's important that we identify the scale of a project that the community would support. I know there are a lot of people that have very well-intentioned ideas of what we should have at the pool. The problem with all of that is if we can't pay for it, then we can't do it. And the only way we can pay for that is to get the support from the voters of the community. So I think that would be the primary focus of this, is determining what the scale of the project could be that the community would support. I know myself, I've heard from many people during the recent campaign that they would like to see a new pool, but it has to be a cost that they feel the community could handle. No one likes paying more taxes. That was made clear by a lot of people. As far as asking that the people who serve on this have some type of background that would assist in identifying the type of project that could be built, the possibility for the financing on it, I think that's also worthwhile. We also have looked out into the community to find people who have expertise in competitive swimming, swim teams, that sort of thing. And I would encourage people in the community, if this does become a reality tonight, put in an application if you would like to serve on the committee. I would also suggest that if this comes to fruition, if we do get a plan out of this, the real effort by people who strongly support a pool is to make sure you get out in the community and talk to your neighbors and friends and make sure that they also support this. So with that, again, we do have the revised document. Are there any other comments or questions that other members of council have?
Yes, I do. Received a number of inquiries regarding membership or application. And I just want to clarify that it's going to be done through the regular volunteer form that's available from the city clerk. And I also believe we have a item on the website where application can be made.
I have not revised the volunteer data sheet that specifically says the pool, because formal action has not been taken. However, we have had residents submit data sheets and have expressed that they are interested in this committee if and when it is formed. And I have created a folder for that with their applications in it. They usually check Parks and Rec and then just write "pool" by it, which is perfectly acceptable.
Any other questions? Councilman Haray?
No, but the, I think I read something about a, the availability to fill out a form on the website. Is that in fact a possibility?
We do have a fillable PDF that can be sent back in to me, yes.
Did you hear that response, Councilman Haray?
No, please, please repeat, please.
There is a fillable PDF that can be sent back to me, Councilmember Haray.
Okay.
Councilman Adams?
Out of curiosity, how many of those requests for, or interested people have we gotten so far, would you say?
Four.
Okay. And then just out of curiosity, again, when you mentioned the nine-person committee, is that including the ex officio council members for nine?
Yes.
Is it my turn? All right. I like the changes that have been proposed. I like that it gives a deadline for when they need to report back to the city council due to the fact of the election timeline. That would give us enough time to get something on the ballot. I believe it's June or July.
The deadline to submit all questions with rebuttals and arguments to the county would be the third week of July. Everything has to be at the county, completely finished.
Finished, okay. So I like that it brings that back before that date. The only, the only issue that I had was under the membership, under D. Changing it to, well, adding that, what their experience has to be under, either finance, construction, or competitive swimming events. I just, I just want to make sure that all aspects of the community are recognized in that and that the people who use it recreationally are also have a voice on the board.
I think that's a point well taken. You know, we can alter that if you would like, change that language to include an "or" in there for recreational use.
And not just someone that, oh, I just love a swimming pool and don't have something to contribute, but something, someone that realizes or has experience with some of the current restraints that our current pool has as far as scheduling, you know, having time to be in there and, you know, use between summer and fall because of the indoor-outdoor issue that we have. Specifically kids.
Any other questions or comments?
No, I, I just think that this is a really good, a really good move. I think the community, I think clearly wants this pool, to see this pool. And regardless of our best efforts previously, it didn't happen. So I'm hoping that this will just be another avenue for people to see the discussion open, hearing what we're doing, and just trying to come to a solution that the community can get behind. Because ultimately, that's what needs to happen if we're going to get a new pool. There's not really a way around that. So hopefully this will help in that regards. Nothing's perfect. I don't know that, you know, this committee's going to be heroes or not, but the, you know, the point is, is that we're trying to do this in an open way so that people can have more confidence. I think that was a little bit more of the problem than anything. Some people, you know, said, well, sure, I don't want to pay any new taxes. But I heard from a lot of people, you know, I wouldn't be, I'd be willing to pay a little bit for this. It's just I'm uncertain about, about what exactly I'm going to be paying more for. And so I think this will help to alleviate some of that. So that, in the end, hopefully, we will have something that has a lot more support from the community in general.
Yeah, I did want to add, you made the comment about buy-in. I think that's a very important part of it. I think you can have a great plan and great ideas, but I think it's really important that the community feels that this would be their pool, that even though they did, people did participate in the focus groups and had ideas of what they wanted, still the idea of making sure that, whether it's the members of the committee or, you know, whoever's involved in getting the word out there, that this is something that people want to buy into, because that's the way we're going to get it voted on during the election. Because otherwise, you know, you can have the best idea in town and if people don't vote for it, it's not going to pass. So that's, I think, the very important part of this process.
Any other questions or comments?
Can I make a motion? No? Can I make a motion? Okay. I would like to move to, okay, pass Resolution Number 6904 with changes. No? 6984, yeah, that's what I said, 6984 with changes, as presented.
I'll second.
We appear to have discussion.
Just for specificity, including the mayor's and Councilwoman Foldus?
Including, yes, I will amend that. I move to pass Resolution Number 6984 to include the mayor's changes and Councilwoman Foldus' change also.
Can you clarify your amendment on item D, please, Councilmember Foldus?
Yes, so to say the appointed members should have experience in competitive or recreational swimming events, finance, and/or construction.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Makes a unanimous vote. Item number seven has been removed. We'll move then to item number eight, Appeal of the Planning Commission Variance Denial.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Michael Mays, your Community Development Director. The item for your consideration tonight is an appeal of the Planning Commission decision, which is a continuation of the matter that was originally heard on August 13th. Mr. Gambino is here to present his appeal to the Planning Commission's decision. But before that, I wanted to provide a little background information regarding the issue for tonight. The city code prohibits the erection of gates across public and private streets. Mr. Gambino erected a gate across Red Baron Lane without a building permit. And he applied for a variance to seek relief from the gate prohibition, as well as the maximum height of the gate. Our code currently only allows a maximum height of six feet. His gate is 8.6. On June 19th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider Mr. Gambino's request and voted three to two to deny the variance. Mr. Gambino submitted a request to appeal the Planning Commission's decision to the city council. So for your consideration this evening, you have the public hearing to consider the appeal and city council deliberation whether to affirm or reverse the decision of the Planning Commission. And I also just wanted to share the requirements within the city code that relate to the consideration of variances. So before a variance is granted in Section 1132-4 of the city code, it shall be shown that there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applicable to the property that do not apply generally to the other properties in the same vicinity or zoning district. That the variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of the substantial property right possessed by other property owners in the same vicinity and zone that is currently being denied to the applicant. The granting of such variance will not be materially detrimental to the public welfare or interest to the property or improvements to properties within the vicinity and the zoning district. That the granting of the variance will not adversely impact or be contrary to the city's master plan. And that the said use of the property is not so general as to require the creation of a general regulation for similar situations. And with that condition, basically what it means is that there aren't so many variances being requested that would warrant the need to amend the code to address the issue. And so with that, I can answer any questions.
Council, any questions? Councilman Adams?
I might just have one question right now at this time. One of the things that was mentioned was that the street was not properly, there's no proper signage saying that it was not a through street. Would that be the responsibility of the city, or the, since it is a private street, would that be the responsibility of the private street owners?
Well, that's certainly something I could talk to Public Works about, because it is connected to a public street and we could evaluate whether appropriate signage would be necessary to add to help inform motorists of that fact. Thank you.
I have no questions.
Just have one. So this is a C2 zone for general commercial and was allowed under a special usage permit, a conditional use permit. Are there any other neighborhoods that you're aware of that have that same condition? A C2 zone, having a R3 in a C2 zone in Boulder City?
There certainly are other residential units within C2 zones. As to something similar in size of this development, I do know that we have actually several multifamily developments that have commercial designations lakeside that use the similar process of the conditional use.
Okay.
And just to follow up on that, do any of those similar developments have gates on private or public streets?
No current gates across public or private streets within the community.
Okay. And I believe after going by that area, the street that goes down to Red Baron Lane is a public street?
That is correct.
Off of Boulder City Parkway?
Yes.
And I believe there is signage there that says dead end or no outlet, I believe?
Off of Bullock Field, which is that cross-street. That I don't know for certain.
Because I believe there's a locked gate at the bottom of that street.
There is.
Okay. All right. Councilman Haray, did you have any questions or comments?
No, I just wanted to confirm, there are no other public or private streets in Boulder City presently that have a gate such as this?
That is correct.
So this would be a one-off, first time, if it was approved or we overturn the Planning Commission's recommendation.
That is correct.
Thank you.
And so Mr. Gambino is here as well.
Mr. Gambino, would you like to come forward? Please state your full name.
Good evening, Gino Gambino. Well, the gate is not a street that goes through anywhere. It's a dead-end street. But basically, it's owned by four homes. That when you enter the street of Red Baron, there is no exit. Now, the way the homes is built, there is a barrier wall very close to the homes. So even if I tried to do a gate for driveway, just like anyone else in Boulder City, I cannot do it because no cars will be able to make a U-turn or be able to exit. So that's the reason why we put a gate that way. Now regarding the permits, when we hired a contractor, he said everything will be included. He will go to the city, pull the permits, do the whole thing. We discovered later he did not. We reached the city, we did what we could, and then that's why we're here. We reached the city, we did what we could, and then that's why we're here. Now, it's not a community. I do own both homes on that street. It's technically if you get in, that's the last two homes. So all I'm trying to do is basically protect my side of the street. Now if I put gates across, again, nobody can turn or do anything, and it's not going to look right. So this is where we have the issue. As a driveway, you can go ahead and do it as a driveway, but if it's the way it's built, it's not right. So this is the issue we've been facing the whole long. And the last time, two said yes, three said no, and the one who said no, the last one, was Nate Littoff, because we did not issue him the listing for the home, but we want to re-listen for sale. So that was the conflict of interest, and he denied it. Otherwise, it would be approved. Now, I don't really think it's a public thing to say, but I have a child that has issues, and every time he gets upset, he tends to run. And the problem is when he runs, he runs to the street and there is no street. He runs straight on a vital highway. So I was trying to not discuss this in public because as a parent, it's not something I want to share with everybody, but I'm sure you guys are parents and grandparents here and understand, if you god forbid run to the street, it's game over. It's not cars that drive in five, 10 miles an hour. They're going 40 miles an hour, 35 miles an hour zone. So this was the main issue why I did it. Now maybe I didn't do it the right way, which I sincerely apologize to you guys and the residents of Boulder City, but I had good intentions to do it. So if you guys can please help me, at least leave it there for now, or I'll do anything that I can to make it right by you guys and by the residents of Boulder City. It's really nobody behind us. It's land, and in front of us, it's barricaded wall with firestone and commercial buildings. And also, police was there many times in the back. Homelesses, they, you know, try to climb in, come inside. You know, they had a trailer, my neighbors had a trailer, they tried to break in multiple times, and the gate has prevented all of that because we are at the end of the street. If you walk all the way to the end of the home and you hide right in behind the pillars, you can be there for hours, no one will know. It's completely out of the side street from anyone to see. So this is all the reason why we went and did it. So I hope you guys be able to accommodate it and hope we can leave it up. That's, I really hope you guys can help me.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Gambino?
I do. I have one question. Was it your intention to sell one of those two homes?
At one point, yes, because we had the issue with the gate and, you know, I'd rather lose property and lose value than lose my son. So if I have to remove the gate, I can no longer stay in Boulder City.
Councilman Adams?
You mentioned one incident where a young man had climbed over a wall and a fence to get into that. Would have this gate prevented that young man from getting to that trailer that he was potentially trying to vandalize or?
Yes, because they walked through, see, behind us was the old airport of Boulder City. So it's nothing but desert land. So what they do is they come in and they walk. Now, it's the houses and a huge wall. When you get to the end, no one sees you. So he had all the time in the world to break in and do what he wants, and when we came out, he hopped on the trailer and cried right out on the gate and run, and that was the end of it. Also, police was there also one time when a trespasser came. He was pretending to be deaf. He came in with the luggages and said he wants to move in. He was just checking to see if there's anybody leaving there. And next to me previously was an older couple, and they also moved out for that reasons as well.
Councilman Harhay, did you have any questions?
The only question I would have, when you purchased the property, you were aware that there was no gate there at that time. So the requirement, your move to install that gate was taken after you had purchased the property. So you were well aware there was no gate there. The other question is, the contractor who erected the gate, I'm a little bit surprised by his action when he was advised by the city compliance officer that what he was doing was non-compliant. Nevertheless, he went on and completed the gate, which is poor form, I think, in terms of respecting what the city's codes are.
To answer your first question, when I purchased the property, I have not purchased it, I moved in first as a renter to the property. And as I was renting, I asked the owner, do you think it's okay if I put a gate over here one day if I decide to buy it? He says, I really don't see why not, as long as the next door neighbor say it's okay because they have an RV, and as long as they have access, I really don't see an issue why you not be able to put a gate. So that was the first question. The second question is, when the city council approached, the contractor, he already took majority of the funds, he came up and says, don't worry about it, I'm going to go and file and do what I need to do, and everything will be perfectly fine. And that's it, that was the end of the contractor. So the gate was up, he was gone, and then I was trying to counter him again to get the approval things that they needed in the city. I couldn't get it from him, I had to go to another place and measure it and do everything on my own and get all the paperwork to the city and pay the fee and try to do it the right way.
Any other questions for Mr. Gambino? Councilman Adams?
I guess I just would like to just make a couple of comments. It's just, it's very difficult for us up here when, I mean, we have code that strictly prohibits gates of any kind across public-owned streets or privately-owned streets. It doesn't matter. That's something to be proud of, or that many members of this community do take as a point of pride. They, you know, I know many people think that, you know, we're not moving forward, maybe we're not progressing. I like to think that Boulder City is a city that shows a lot of leadership that other cities could look to for guidance, but that's for them to decide. To the point that was made earlier in public comment, you know, if there is thought that we need to change these codes in order to allow gates across public or private streets, I mean, this to me is not the appropriate method. I know that's not what you're here to do today, but I just wanted to make point of that, that, you know, there is a better approach to getting those things addressed. To me, the height of the gate isn't the issue. I'm not, that's what's not concerned, it's the gate that's there itself. And I understand you feel there are extenuating circumstances, but, you know, if we were to say yes for you, then it's the next community over that says, well, hey, we had a guy who came over here and we want a gate now. And then all of a sudden, that's the new, that's the new go-to. And if we say yes to you, where does it stop other than it's a de facto way of going around that if a code needs to be changed, that should be handled a different way? So I'm just, I'm just letting you know that I'm having a lot of trouble. From what I hear, I know that you feel there has been an increase in crime potentially down in that area, but from the numbers that we see, I mean, crime is not as big of an issue out here. I understand your home is a particular...
It's more of my child, Mr. James. If you run to the street and get killed, what am I going to do? That's the main question that I hear for and I open up to all of you guys as parents and grandparents, is god forbid this kid run to the street. What am I going to do?
Unfortunately, I cannot offer any parental advice to you, sir. I'm sorry.
Of course.
Any other questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Is Chief Shea there?
Chief Shea is in attendance tonight?
I'd have a question for him. I'm just concerned about the crime issue because I don't think I've heard anything regarding that area being a hotbed of crime. And the intruders coming over the wall, I don't believe you can stop that by putting in a gate. Because if they're already, there's already a gate there now, and they're coming over the wall, they're just going to go back over the wall or out another way out of that complex. So I don't see how that's going to stop the intrusion issue. Maybe just have the police patrol that area to make sure that their presence is known is a solution other than violating our code.
Actually, sir, that's happened before the gate was placed. After the gate was placed, people turn around and leave. Also, when people were seen as a true street, they will drive all the way, try to cut the traffic, also before Highway 11 opened up, or when there's a heavy traffic on Sundays, they think there is a bypass from the main street to go around, and they see those streets and they try to go on that street as well. Since we put the gate on, they don't come through. It's, the gate is really on a property that I don't have a choice. Anybody else in Boulder City who lives in a home can do a gate for their driveway. I cannot even do that. That's the main problem. If I do a gate for my driveway, it will block anybody from making a U-turn or turning around that street because there's no space. So this is the issue that I'm going through as well. I would love to change and honor what you guys are saying, I don't have a problem with that, but there is, I need an alternative, something that I can do to be able to protect my family and my son. That's all I'm asking.
Councilwoman Foldus, did you have a question?
I had a couple of questions. What is on the backside of the house, the house that faces the other valley? Is there gates around that or does it just go straight to desert?
It's gate and it goes to desert.
Okay, so there's, there is a fence that goes all the way around the perimeter of the backside?
No, it's pure open desert, and then the only little gate you have is the one that's actually for your backyard. It's a small four-feet gate.
What has been done to mitigate some of the questions that you had before as far as, you know, have you talked about putting in speed bumps for people who are going down there too fast, or put in a dead end street sign, or putting cameras or motion lights for security reasons? Have any of those things been done in your...
Well, I did, I put cameras in. I put whatever I could. Now it's also, there's two other homes that I never considered putting, you know, speed bombs or anything because I don't want to inconvenience anybody. They also have trailers and stuff like that, but I did everything in my power that I could to prevent it.
Has there ever been a time where you've had to back up the entire length of the road?
I'm sorry?
Have you ever had to back straight up the whole road, just backed up the road the whole way?
Uh...
Not use a U-turn?
No, it's very difficult. It's very difficult. If you go all the way to the end, it gets narrower and narrower because the end home, which I own, it goes closer and closer towards the end of the wall. So the more, the more you go in, the more and more it's difficult. But where the gate is placed is wide open, you can easily turn, U-turn, no problem.
Right, but if you were at the back of the gate and you backed all the way back out to the public road, it gets wider?
Yes, ma'am.
So it could be possible for someone to back directly out of the road if there was a gate blocking your driveway, maybe you're considered your driveway?
No, ma'am, no. It's impossible because the way the houses are built, it's the front of the house, it goes pretty much almost six or seven feet from where the garage is, which is where the gate will start, and then it'll leave you maybe at three feet to the major barricade wall. So if I put it just for my driveway like everybody else does in a private home, the person will not be able to make a U-turn or do anything, and it's just going to cause problems and, you know, I don't want to cause any issues. That was the reason why.
Without using a U-turn though, it is possible for someone to drive right backwards the same way they drove in?
Very difficult. It's going to be very narrow.
Okay. Also, you know, as far as the child concern, I understand that concern because I have a runaway child that does the same thing.
I appreciate that, ma'am, thank you.
So I don't want to say that's ignored, but I look into that when I purchase a home. You know, I make sure that I purchase a house that's not on a fast street or near a fast street. And you rented this house before you bought it.
Correct, and that was the main thing I asked the owner when I, because they built it. It was four homes that they built, and I asked, and he said, yeah, I don't see a problem as long as the next door be okay with it, which I asked the next door, and he said, sure, I don't have a problem with it. And that's when I got all the approvals from both homes.
Right. And so in this situation, it's just a little bit different where it's not, in Boulder City, you know, even though you have private streets, you don't get to do everything you want in a private street.
Absolutely, and that's what I apologize sincerely for.
And that's kind of where we're at too.
For the action that I took, it was wrong. I'm not condoning it, and I do apologize to you guys and to the entire residents of Boulder City, but I'm not just asking for a solution. I mean, I am a resident here, my kids does go to school here, this is my community, I love it here, and I don't want to be forced to move out just because of, you know, this situation. If it's anything you guys can help me, I'd be really appreciative.
I have some issues about taking word from someone you rent or buy from about building anything on land you don't own. I back up to a public alley and have, would love to know that I could put a gate across that public alley so that especially during special events, people wouldn't park in my alley. And I couldn't, there is no place for me to put a gate or a fence around my house. And I think it's, my issue is about personal responsibility to know what the rules are to follow when it comes to building structures or building gates or fences around your house. And I also have, I have a problem with the issue of, I don't like the idea of a code, so I should, you know, the other fellow, you know, that I, that we should be able to do this thing and hope everybody follows suit and then we'll change the code. It doesn't work that way.
I totally agree. The reason why I asked the property, the owner of the property, because they build it, so I assume they know what's okay and what's not okay if you build the whole four homes.
Right.
And that's when I either made a mistake or I didn't do it right, which I apologize for again, but I'm trying to do it the right way. I mean, it's got to be a solution to this.
Do you have a backyard?
I'm sorry, no, I don't have a backyard. There's nowhere, there's no place for the kids to play unless they play over there in that area, which that's why if I was considering just to do just a driveway, then, you know, it's still okay, he can run out, he can, you know, go to the major highway, which is fine, but even if I do that, then I, nobody can turn or do anything. And it's just going to look not very pleasant to the eye because it's going to go in a curve, and it's pretty much...
Did you have the children when you moved in?
I'm sorry?
Did you have children when you moved in?
No, because they were living with my ex. And then eventually the court granted for me to have my children, and now they're with me full-time. And I don't want to give that privilege just because of the gate. So I was considering selling if I cannot do that, if I can leave the gate or protect my children.
I have one other comment. No matter what the outcome of our decision tonight, I would suggest to staff that they examine Bullock Field Street to determine whether the proper signage exists of no outlet or dead end or whatever, that would discourage traffic in that area inadvertently being in that area as, no matter what we decide tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Gambino. Is there anything else you would like to add?
No, just please, I'm begging all of you guys for help just to get the situation mannered correctly.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, one of the issues I think that we always have to keep in mind in these is there can be extenuating circumstances, but what the law lays out, what the code lays out, are five conditions that have to be met. It's not that you can meet one or two of them, it's that there are five conditions and all five of those must be met in order for variance to be issued. As I look over those five, are there exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applicable to the property or to its intended use that do not apply generally to the other property or classes of use in the same vicinity and zone? I know that those four units there, there are no other units like that in that area, but there are four units there. And they're all similarly built, they're all similarly constructed. They were constructed and properly permitted. It was a change to allow the R3 within C2, which we've already heard is not an unusual thing here, to have that type of housing within that. I don't, I'm not aware of any changes that have occurred in that vicinity as far as new construction, changes, anything like that. The second item is such variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right possessed by other property in the same vicinity and zone but which is denied to the property in question. Again, I don't know that there are any other gates that are in that area. We've heard also that similar projects, developments, we don't have that here in Boulder City. We don't have... We don't have that here in Boulder City. We don't have the gates on public or private streets. Third is the granting of such variance would not be materially detrimental to the public welfare or interest to the property or improvements in such vicinity and zone in which the property is located. Again, whether the variance is issued or not, it is a small development there. So, that may fit in to that one. The granting of such variance shall not adversely affect or be contrary to the comprehensive plan. In fact, this is contrary to the comprehensive plan. Our master plan specifically states that we will not have gated communities here in Boulder City. And that goes back some 20 years, I believe, that that plan was developed and that verbiage was put in there. We simply don't allow gated communities here in Boulder City. And the last one is the conditions or situations of the specific piece of property or the intended use of said property for which the variance is sought is not of so general or recurrent in nature as to make reasonably practicable the formulation of a general regulation of such conditions or situations. Again, as Michael Mays had stated earlier, we don't see applications for the gated communities or gates across public streets to an extent that it would require us to look, see whether we need to change in that code or not.
It's, sounds like a community, but in the end, it's really my private home. There's no community because both homes are mine. It's not really a community. I'm not developing a community.
Well, you may have purchased both properties, but that's not how that was originally constructed. So, when we look at what we have here, we have to look at the way it's situated. The fact that you may have purchased these homes doesn't change the zoning that applies to that area, in my opinion. So, what I'm getting at is when I look at these five conditions that must be met, the only one is, potential is number three, the granting of such variance may, will not be materially detrimental. You know, I just don't think you've met the burden here to obtain a variance for constructing the gate. Apparently, you were advised that the construction of the gate was not allowed, and yet, construction was completed on it. I would not be able to support a variance. So, any other questions or comments?
No.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
Is there any way I can get a temporary time to leave the gate on till I be able to sell the property?
I would say, you know, that's not a decision for us to make. I think that's something that you could speak with code enforcement about.
Okay, which is the city, I believe, or Michael?
Well, certainly, depending on the council's decision tonight, and if it is to uphold the planning commission's denial of the variance, we would proceed with action to have the gate removed. We would certainly talk to the property owner and Mr. Gambino about the timing of its removal. I think the only concern is, is depending on how long before you would sell and then the concern about potential buyers who would assume that the gate goes with the property.
It's actually noted at the real estate that the gate is not with the property because even that was the condition on August 13. But if I sell the house, the gate has to come down, which it's the same.
Right, so it's something that we would certainly talk to the property owner about.
So, Mayor, before you tonight is the question of whether or not to approve the variance. If the variance is not approved, then staff will go ahead and execute the denial and start those processes and procedures that are already set forth.
Thank you for the clarification. Any other questions or comments? At this time, I would move then to sustain the denial of the variance from the planning commission.
I second.
Question?
Just one more item. It would be important that you also include the findings. Whether you add your own findings or adopt the findings of the planning commission, that's important to include in your motion.
But before we even get to that far, because it's on the agenda, we need to conduct the public hearing under this item, please.
Thank you. So, Mr. Gambino, if you'd have a seat, we're going to ask if there are any others that have comments they would like to make.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any member of the public wishing to make comment on this matter? Mr. Fain? I know you've spoken earlier, so if we could...
I will be brief. I just think you should still deny it. The applicant has got some points and stuff like that, but, you know, you gotta be aware of where you buy. Be aware of the rules and stuff like that in the community that you buy into. I feel sorry for him, but please hold up what the planning commission did. Otherwise, it opens the gate for many, many other areas to try and do the same thing. All you gotta get a consensus of a few people in a block, boom, there's a gate. Storybrooke Homes, boom, perfect example. That can be turned into a gated community in a heartbeat. Any mobile home park in town can be converted into a private gated community in a heartbeat. You don't want to open Pandora's box. Thank you.
Anyone else wanting to speak in public comment? All right, we will go ahead and close public comment. So, Madam City Clerk, what you're referring to then is the motion should be put in a format to either accept the decision of the planning commission?
To affirm the decision, to reverse the decision, or to, yeah, to affirm or reverse it. And with either one, you have to state with the findings.
Adopt the findings of the planning commission.
Let me just take a quick look here again at what was stated in their decision. Councilman Adams?
Yeah, well, I did just want to point out, because it was mentioned regarding the vote of Mr. Lassoff earlier. Just to clarify, it wouldn't, even if he had recused himself, which I was also present. I don't believe that that would have been necessary for the vote. But even if he had recused himself, it wouldn't have passed necessarily. It wouldn't have passed because it actually requires three votes in the approval to actually push it forward, not just the most that is present that night or anything. So, just for clarification on how that process actually works, just for your awareness, I wanted to point that out.
Mayor? If I can highlight page 114 of the packet, which highlights specifically the findings of the planning commission with respect to their denial. They included that there are no exceptional conditions with regard to the property that justify the request as the applicant is otherwise allowed to install gates permitted by right. The requested variance is not necessary to preserve a substantial property right because there aren't other gates within the community. So, those were their findings. And so, the council could approve subject to those findings.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bridges, do you have a question?
No, no.
Okay. I have read that, and I appreciate you pointing out where that is. You know, I agree with that, but I do think that the other criteria, this does not, granting of variance would not adversely affect or be contrary to the comprehensive plan. This is contrary to the comprehensive plan. So, is it possible that we can adopt those findings but make mention also them? All right, then I will go ahead and amend the motion to adopt the findings of the planning commission. In addition, this is an adverse effect to our comprehensive plan. And also, the conditions or situations of the specific piece of property or the intended use of said property for which the variance is sought is not of so general or recurrent in nature to make it a reasonably practicable formulation of a general regulation of such conditions or situations. That's item five of the criteria. I don't believe that that has been met either. Mr. City Attorney, you look as though you'd like to make a comment.
There's a motion.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
Mr. City Attorney?
Just want to make sure, Mayor, that your motion is accepting the findings of the planning commi...
Affirm.
Affirming, correct, thank you. Affirming and then with the additional findings.
Yes, that's correct. Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion?
I just want to clarify. So, were your findings that you're proposing are one and two from the planning commission and then four and five in addition?
Correct. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Your vote is unanimous on that? Again, Mr. Gambino, I think that if you talk with Mr. Mays, hopefully, they can work something out on the timing of it for you. Thank you. At this point then, brings us to item number nine, public comment. Anyone wishing to comment on anything does not have to be included on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comment. That brings us to council reports. Councilwoman Folda, any report?
No, nothing to report.
Councilwoman Bridges?
Nothing to report yet.
Councilman Adams?
Yeah, on Friday night, I attended a play put on by the Boulder City History and Arts Foundation that was down at the LEDWP. It was called Tonio by, I believe it was Jose Anthony was the performer's name. He wrote it and directed it. It was absolutely incredible. It was kind of a life story of somebody who had moved from Southern California here into the Las Vegas area as a kid. And I just really love seeing the arts here in Boulder City. And I think it's always great to go out there and support those, so good on it.
Councilman Harhay?
Yes, I just want to remind everyone that the last week in September is our WARS Festival for the Sunrise Rotary. And full disclosure, I'm a member of the Sunrise Rotary Club. In the past, this has been a very successful fundraiser. And the interesting thing is, the funds are all given away. The various community events, including the very successful seniors' graduation night out. So, that's the last one, the last Saturday, last weekend in September. So, put that on your calendar. Thanks.
Thank you. And as long as we're mentioning events, we've got Chautauqua coming up. After the WARS Fest, we've got Art in the Park. I think summer might be over in Boulder City. What do you think? Finally cooling off a little bit. All right, thank you all, and with that, we are adjourned then.